Two agenda items, one is the minutes. We've arrived to order, we've been in order, I think. We called to order but started this other meeting, so we're still here. Right? As far as I know, okay.
The new and improved FinCon.
Yeah, the new and improved FinCon.
Yeah.
So we, the first item is the minutes. Do I have a motion on minutes of five eighteen?
Motion to accept the minutes of five eighteen, as Rick.
Second?
Second.
David? All those, any comments or anything? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstain, were you there? You weren't there?
I'm not with us.
Oh, okay. One exception?
Sir.
Okay. Alright, so that's that. Now the next one is to re-order. Okay, do we hear any Norman nominations for chair? No way? Okay. Let the record show that Mary nominated Scott, and Scott said, "No way." I assume that's just because of your time. That's what I thought.
It's always the new person gets it, right?
Don't tell her that, she'll resign. No, we're talking about chairman.
Oh, yeah. No, wait.
It's already taken.
Allowed.
No way. Now we're down to this side of the table.
And this one was removed and stopped due to the procedure of conflicts. His wife tears us.
Oh, that's right. That is a, that's right, so David escapes.
If this is a selling point to the remaining members, you get to work very closely with the town manager now.
Michael.
There he is.
Alright, we're gonna get this done fast, we're gonna get it done fast. All those in favor?
Okay. Cable, you ready?
Six to nothing. I abstain. We got two more, Mark. Two more seconds. Vice Chair, nomination Vice Chair.
I nominate, um, Mary.
I second that. Anybody else? Okay. All those in favor of Mary as Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, six to zero, Mary abstains. Okay, now the clerk. David's the current clerk. I agree. Alright. Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk done.
Okay, we're ready to go, Cable?
Alrighty. So I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Town of Groton Select Board on Monday, July fifteenth. We just had a scintillating FinCon reorganization meeting. We have a new member, so that's exciting. In the Select Board meeting, we will start with announcements and a review of the agenda, followed by public comment period number one. Under the Town Manager's report, we will consider ratifying some acquaintance regarding the country club. Uh, we will consider accepting the nomination of the Town Manager, of Town Manager appointing Molly Foster to the Commission on Accessibility. We will have yet another update on our schedule through Labor Day.
That's your favorite part of meetings, right?
And no matter how many times we go through it, I'm still confused. Uh, at six ten, we have items for Select Board consideration in action, potentially approving an all-alcoholic, one-day liquor license for Friends of Prescott for tequila emas. And then a discussion, a potential calling for an opening of warrant for Fall Town Meeting. At six fifteen or thereabouts, some joint session with the Finance Committee, we will discuss and potentially approve fiscal twenty-four line item transfers. And then at six thirty, we have a discussion and potential decision regarding the Island Road Bridge project. Uh, we have other business and then ongoing issues, if there are comments or questions around PFAS, Green Communities, the Florence Roach Construction Project, or pilots. We then have an opportunity for liaison reports, a second public comment period, and one set of minutes. So, back up to the top, announcements. Yes?
Yes, if I may, thank you. So, as you know, we've been working with the Highway Department and the State on a review of the Swanacook River Dam. Wonder whether or not we wanna keep it, fix it, take it down, whatever. The final report has been completed by the State. It is posted on the town's website. I am going to schedule that for, uh, with the Chair's permission, for the July twenty-ninth meeting. And we'll have a discussion, the Select Board is gonna have to make a decision on how to proceed based on that report. So that will be on your agenda for the twenty-ninth. Anyone interested, it is on the homepage of the website, it's a very detailed report. And I know if you need some nighttime snooze reading, I encourage you to read the report in its entirety.
Does it make a specific recommendation?
Tom? Cause as you can tell, I'm still awake.
So, it's a feasibility report that was done, um, the dam is actually owned by two entities, it owned by the Town of Rock as well as County of Rock, so we still own it. Like, so I went forward and had to apply for this grant. What happens to it is up to us. This is the feasibility part, tell what hoops and hurdles are gonna be due, estimated costs and such like that. That's what's all in this report. Whether, they really don't recommend, they just give us the guidelines to. So then the rest of it is up to us to decide. But it's, reading for it, it's a nice report, it's very feasible.
So they give us cost to remove, not to repair?
Correct, well, so the cost of, cost of repair would probably be additional engineering funds and such. The owner on the other side wants to have nothing to do with the dam anymore, waiting for some correspondence on that. To share with you as well as the Shirley Select Board. Still waiting for that, hopefully they'll be on that, they'll be on that policy coming up in a couple of weeks. There's just, there's not a lot of money for repairs, it's more for removals. Except we only own half of it, which is a weird situation.
Um, so, and with your permission, because the moderator is here, I'd like to move up the discussion on calling for the town meeting to the first thing that you do? If that's okay? I don't wanna keep Jason longer than we have to. Although, Jason, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting, cause I know you find this riveting. Um, so it's that time of year for the Select Board to call for the Fall Town Meeting. There are two proposed dates for the meeting. The first date would be Saturday, oh, I'm sorry, I gotta move down to the part, I apologize. So the first date would be Saturday, October fifth. Um, and then the second date would be Saturday, October nineteenth. The default date is Monday, October twenty-first, however, that is the first day of early voting for the presidential election. So I prefer not to do it on that Monday. Town Clerk would be really tied up with, with voting. Um, so, um, I've spoken to a couple of board members, and October fifth seems to be the date that all five of you will be here. So I'm gonna ask the Select Board this evening to call for the town meeting on Saturday, October fifth, twenty-twenty-four, uh, beginning at nine AM at the PAC. The warrant would open this evening, and it would close on Thursday, August fifteenth, at the close of business, which is four PM at the Town Hall. The one thing that I wanna talk to the Finance Committee and the Select Board about is the printing of the warrant that we send to all, our tradition has been to send it to all forty-five hundred homes. In the last year, the cost of printing has doubled. We've gone from a five thousand dollar cost of printing to a nine thousand dollar, ten thousand dollar cost of printing. Uh, for the Spring Town Meeting, the one that we had scheduled for March twenty-sixth, we spent thirteen thousand dollars preparing for that meeting between the warrant, postage, and everything else. When we did the Special Town Meeting, we just sent postcards with a, with a link, QR code link to the website. I think there's nothing in the, in the bylaws that requires us, it's been our tradition. It's getting to be a very costly proposition to the budget. As a matter of fact, one of the main line item transfers, and we've done reserve line transfers this year, of close to fifteen thousand dollars for that. When we did the postcards, it cost us a total of three thousand dollars, including the packet that we printed for the, for the meeting. So what I would like to recommend to the Finance Committee and the Select Board and the Moderator, is that we follow the postcard idea. And we send postcards with a QR code link to the warrant. But, because this is the first year, what I would recommend is we print five hundred copies of the warrant. We put them at the Town Hall, the Library, the Center, you know, divide them up. So if people want an actual copy, they can get an actual copy of, of, of the warrant. Otherwise, the QR link to the website. But I do not wanna do that without the permission of the Select Board, Finance Committee, and the Moderator, so I figured tonight would be an opportune time to have that discussion. So, that is my proposal. But I need direction from all of you.
Gary is going for the microphone.
I am. Fully, fully support. Um, and I'd love to see a stark cabinet day, like if you're gonna do five hundred to put it here, let's see how many get picked up. I also wonder if we may wanna, in some way, either at town meeting or through ballot, poll members of town. I actually think it would be ideal that we could even stop printing and having them at town meeting. But I think we would need to, we would need to have the, the sense of the entire town and citizen area if that was okay before we did that.
The one thing that we'll still do at the town meeting is the motions. We'll still print out the motions and hand those out at the meeting. Jason, I don't know if you wanted to provide any comment or feedback on that proposal?
Having just been approached this evening, um, we knew we were one of the few towns, I think, that still does this. A lot of towns have already gone in this direction. To Gary's point about seeing how many people pick up the five hundred, I'd be interested to know, seeing if we could put that link, many individual users are looking, so we can make sure people are actually seeing. Um, in case the warrant does play a role at the meeting. I would remind you that back in the colonial days, the reading of the warrants was because we didn't have printed copies. And not everybody could read. So that's why we waived the reading of the warrant at the beginning of the meeting. Um, so I'd like to see us not go back to that.
Mark, the warrant is also, isn't it in the Select Board, Board package?
Yeah, it's, we-
I mean, you don't, you don't need to-
There's a ton of opportunities to get the warrant.
I mean, you could actually put on email or something and say, you can pick it up here, 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 and here, because I always get it off the, the Select Board package that goes out when you send it out weekly. Cause that's, when you do it, it's, it's attached to that.
Correct.
And so you can pick it up there as well, you don't have to, for those who use the computer versus, I think you're right, we should have hard copies for people who-
Well, and, and one thing that we said too, um, is if somebody calls, and we had the Finance Team met and discussed this before I brought this recommendation forward. If someone calls and said, "Hey, can you print out a copy of the warrant for me, cause we ran out of copies," we would obviously do that for any resident that asked for that as well. So, that is my recommend, I take it, I have a consensus that I will go with the postcards?
Yes.
With the QR link to the website, and we will do a dry run of five hundred printed copies of the warrant that we will put at the center, the library, and at the Town Clerk's office here at Town Hall.
And when you put the QR code, mention where else they can pick it up.
Yep. Oh, to be on the postcard. We'll, we'll make sure the postcard has all the-
Like I said on this, the packages you do put out every week.
Cause we will still, we will still send postcards to everybody's homes.
So do we need five hundred copies?
I wanted to start with five hundred, just to see, just to be on the safe side. And if there's, as Gary said, if there's like four hundred copies left over, that will dictate what we do in future meetings. Alright, so, that said, that's what I'm gonna do, so I would ask this board this evening to, uh, call for the two thousand twenty-four Fall Town Meeting to be held on Saturday, October fifth, twenty-twenty-four. I would ask you to make that motion and take that action tonight.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Is this, do both boards need to vote on this?
Nope, this is a total Select Board. I wanted the Finance Committee's input on the, um-
The QR code?
Yeah, the warrant.
Alright. All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, I would ask the Select Board to open the warrant this evening and close it on Thursday, Octo-, uh, August fifteenth, at the close of business.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. That is unanimous as well.
Thank you. You'll see on the screen, uh, the timing, um, so the, the town meeting will be on October fifth. You'll open the warrant tonight, closes on the fifteenth. I'll get the first draft of the warrant to you on the twenty-sixth. I would like with the Finance Committee's approval and the Select Board's approval, to hold a public hearing on the warrant articles on Monday, September ninth. And then, um, the Select Board would finalize the warrant on the sixteenth, and we would have to post the warrant two weeks prior, which is September twentieth. And then the town meeting would be held on Saturday, October fifth, at nine AM. So that is the timeframe for the, um, for the meeting. So thank you, Board, for doing that. We're, we're good to go there.
Thank you.
Um, give me two seconds here now. I want to go back here, and I want to open up this document. So it's six fifteen. I'd ask the Town Accountant to grab a microphone, if she would like to, please. I hope this document opens. Um, so, as you know, under the Municipal Modernization Act, the Select Board and Finance Committee in joint session can do line item transfers at the end of the fiscal year, uh, to balance the budget, which we need to do. So, of course, the Town Accountant has been working, the Town Accountant, Assistant Town Accountant, has been working very hard, getting that last warrant out, uh, to the, to the, um, for payment. So there were several line items that, that had shortfalls that we needed to make up. You have the list there. The Town Accountant was here three weeks ago and providing you with a summary list of that. You can see now it's been updated, and there are additional line item transfers that happened since that day, which we anticipated totaling twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. So, Patricia, if you would like to walk the Select Board of FinCon through this, I would be most appreciative.
Sure, thank you all. Um, so the original amount column under six twenty-four twenty-four, that's what we presented to you, uh, a few weeks ago. Since then, we've had, um, what I, what I was hoping would happen was that the Fire Department was going to be able to find some, uh, funding, and they would end up not needing as much. And that actually did prove true, and so we reduced the amount of the line item transfers that we needed for the Fire, for the Fire Department by about forty thousand dollars. So they're looking for approximately a fifty thousand dollars to support their, um, six-thirty budget. And then there's a bunch of other, you know, small, um, small items, we had to, uh, support the mechanical inspector's salaries, and that's all driven by the kind of activity that's going on with inspections. Um, it happens every year. Country Club, we, we added a little bit of, um, funding for them. They're gonna need about seventy-two thousand to get through the end of this year. That's very similar to what they needed in support last year. They asked for about seventy-six thousand last year, so they're, they run about the same amount. Um, and I think that's just because their activity is so high as they're going into their, their busy summer season. The other thing that I mentioned to you the last time I was here is that we're now including enterprise fund line item transfers on this report. We never used to do that, but the State is now requiring us to treat enterprises, and we do any other department with a budget, and so they are also on there. They cover all of their own, um, deficits with their own ratepayer-funded budgets. So there's no subsidy from the general fund that's needed for any of those enterprise items. The list looks long, because we do try to cover people's deficits from other lines within their own budgets, and most of the departments were able to do that this year. Um, again, the Fire Department had a lot of, um, unanticipated needs regarding their recruitment class and vehicle maintenance, and so they were unable to do that. And again, the Country Club, which happens to them pretty much every year. But if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
If I, if I can, um, one thing I wanna point out with regards to the Country Club is, we're doing the final accounting. Um, and we will bring you a final report in the next couple of weeks-
Right.
-to let you know what's happened at the Country Club. But I believe for the third consecutive year, they will have a surplus. Not as big as in years past, because they are spending more, cause it's busy, but there was, I believe, no taxpayer subsidy.
Yes, so from what I can tell, they're unable to cover their capital purchases, but we do have a positive balance, about twelve thousand dollars right now, um, of profit for them in operations, so it's, it's good news.
Can, can you just talk about the unintended, can you talk about the unintended amount of the Country Club expenses?
Yeah, uh, they're busy. And because they are so busy, uh, they've had to bring in extra help. They now have seventy-five employees at the Country Club, which is the largest amount of employees ever. But they also have, when I started here sixteen years ago, there were a hundred and fifty members. We peaked in two thousand twelve, just before Shawn Campbell took over as the manager, uh, at three hundred members, and we are now over a thousand members at the Country Club. So it has really taken off dramatically. And because of that, there are more expenses. The major capital issue that happened was the pool deck. We had, um, put in money for the pool deck, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and the price came in higher. Uh, there were some extra things that we had to do, so that was, that was an issue that we had to deal with. The Highway Department did a lot of the work, saving us money, but there were still added expenses that we had to cover. So that would be the reason for the Country Club ownership, um, expenses.
Mike, when you say, oh, go ahead.
Good. Out of the seventy-five employees, how many are seasonal?
Uh, I would say seventy-three? We have, I don't mean to be a wise guy, there are, there's a full-time general manager that works year-round and a full-time superintendent. Everybody else is seasonal.
And some of those are eight hours a week?
Yeah.
Twelve, not in like forty, thirty?
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions?
So it's, it's a, uh, two votes, separate votes. The Select Board has to vote to approve the line item transfers as presented, and the Finance Committee has to vote to approve the line item transfers as presented. So I don't know who wants to go first.
There are a motion to approve the line item transfers?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Inanimate.
Excellent. Um, if it's okay, thank you, Finance Committee. If it's, if it's okay with, um, oh, I guess I forgot, I'm sorry. Usually you go first, give me your off.
Well, they-
Jumped the gun.
I'll make that motion that we approve the line items as presented, and I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Excellent. So we have a few minutes before six-thirty, and I'm not sure-
Mark, you want great likes here when they present, or?
Stay where you are. Um, so, uh, just to go through, I, speaking of the Country Club, adding to that seventy-four, um, employees, I would ask the Board to ratify my appointments of Megan Kelly and Savannah Montero as lifeguards, Colby LaPointe to the camp staff, and Caitlin Haggerty to the golf staff.
So moved? You want a second one?
I'll second that, sure. Alright. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
So, the Commission on Accessibility has requested that I nominate Molly Foster for appointment to the Commission. I asked the, uh, Select Board to accept that nomination and appoint Miss Foster to the Commission with a term that's by June thirty, twenty-twenty-five.
I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Um, looking at your schedule, uh, moving forward, we're not meeting next week. On the twenty-ninth, we will, uh, get an update from the Diversity Committee. Hopefully you will ratify the Fire Chief's, uh, contract, and then swear him in. Uh, Chief Cheeks. Uh, we will also have that public meeting on the proposal to the Swanacook, uh, Swanacook River Dam, as I, as I discussed earlier. Uh, we are not meeting on, uh, August fifth, we will meet on August twelfth, and then not on the nineteenth. On August twenty-sixth, it'll be a remote meeting, but I will be presenting to you the first review of the Fall Town Meeting warrant, and then you will not meet on, uh, Labor Day. One addition to next week's, uh, agenda that wasn't on here, because it just happened today, is hopefully the Board will accept and finalize the annual review of the Town Manager. I know that's one of your favorite things to, oh, I know that's one of your favorite things to do, but that is gonna be on, uh, that agenda. Um, and then, uh, moving on to Select Board items for consideration in action. Uh, the Friends of Prescott has, has requested a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for their, uh, tequila emas, to be held on Friday, July twenty-sixth, from seven to eight-thirty PM. I'd ask the Select Board to consider approving that license this evening.
I would like them to move that question? For that, that, that request?
I will second that. Is there any discussion or questions?
What is emas?
Uh, and more, and more, I don't know what the more is, but there's more.
Figures the cop wants to, wants to cut down on the drinking. Put the hat away, fella.
Alright, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Um, we do have, uh, minutes that you can approve for, uh, your meeting of, uh, July first. I'm gonna assume public comment period number two is gonna be?
Yeah.
We can circle back to public comment number two. Alright, so the one set of minutes from July first.
I'll make the motion that we approve those. I'll second that.
Perfect. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
One last update, and then we'll get right into, uh, the Island Road Bridge. Uh, last Thursday, uh, at seven o'clock, we held a, uh, information session on the PFAS, um, pipeline. Called the PFAS pipeline, the water main project to deal with the PFAS at the, at the high school, uh, and the surrounding properties in, in Dunstable. Uh, I was there, uh, Matt and Peter was, was there as well, we had, Tom Delaney was there, Art Cheeks, Mike Luth, and of course, most important, Tom Orkai, cause Tom really added a lot of good information, uh, to that meeting. I'd say about fifty residents attended. I thought it was great, they asked a lot of good questions. Uh, Tyler Schmidt from, uh, Environmental Partners, uh, provided a, a nice presentation to explain detour routes, the process and, and, and everything. Uh, people were very appreciative. We got a lot of thank yous afterwards for holding the session, so it's replaying on the Groton Channel, Government Channel, for anybody that wants to watch it, because there was a lot of good questions and a lot of good answers. Um, we're still waiting to hear back from DCR on the August meeting, but our plan is to go out to bid in September with a hopeful start date of, uh, October first.
Sounded like a lot of people wanted to tie in, too, I mean, even though it's not effective.
Correct, which is, which is good, so I'm glad, and I think they appreciated the Select Board's reduced, uh, connection fee, which, which, which was good. Um, it's going to be a nighttime drop, and people understood that and understood why we were doing it as well. So I wanna thank Matt, Peter for being there, I wanna thank the department heads that were there, cause I thought it went very, very well. Okay, now to the fun part of the meeting, um, that everybody's here for, and that is the Island Road Bridge. Tom, grab the microphone, thank you. Um, so, in, in, just to give a, a brief summary to get us started, and then Tom will, will go through some great detail on this. Um, that bridge has been failing for over twenty years. Uh, the Highway Department has double-plated it, and it really needs something to be done to it. So we applied under the, the State's Small Bridge Program. I should point out that on the screen, and I'm gonna stop sharing the screen so that they can, so that we can, they can see us, our highway engineers, um, and the engineer that, that actually did the study for us. So, we, we applied, we received a grant, they came out, they reviewed the bridge, they came up with an idea, uh, for, for replacing the bridge with a fifty-four, uh, inch culvert. I believe fifty-four inch culvert?
Yeah.
And so, um, that has caused a little bit of concern from some of the residents, and I think you see them all here tonight, uh, to talk to you about it. Um, because of that, I, I thought it was important that we kick it upstairs to the Board, and have you give us direction on how to proceed, because there could be costs to the town, depending on the solution that we follow. I think we need to have a, a discussion. I'm very happy that the Finance Committee is here tonight for that discussion. I will tell you, Bud, Tommy, and I, Karen, and Charlotte, Steve's, our Conservation Administration Administrator, went out and toured the bridge last Wednesday or Thursday, I can't remember when, Wednesday I think it was, uh, to take a look at it. So Bud, Bud, Bud made me very, very nervous, he started climbing on the rocks to get under the bridge, but I thought we were gonna lose Bud, but he survived.
Wasn't deep enough to drown.
So, uh, here we are, and, uh, Tom, if you wanna just give a, a, oh, Brian Callahan, our, uh, our GTW Director in Training is here as well. So thank you for being here, and so Tommy, the floor is yours.
Alright, um, so a little bit of brief history and might of it. So we've been here a little bit for, since I've, I've been around here, we've set up the town, seventy-four, Town Road Back. set up the road back in the east. We really, the first work we did down there, we poured some extra concrete around the existing I beams probably 15 or 18 years ago to help shore it up. I was starting to get worried about it a little bit back then. After that, we put a set of plates on it. Then we were getting a little bit more worried about it, and there was pieces up and started hanging on the bridge. Contacted Mass DOT, they actually put it on their bridge schedule, and they were actually coming out to give us monthly bridge inspections with their, one of their units. They made recommendations, recommendations to us. We added a second set of road plates on there on the top of it four or five years ago and have been working, working to try to find a solution ever since. I've always in the back of my head had a piece of pipe, and in the old case, it was a big problem. Mass DOT Small Bridge Program really came to light, and it was obviously, it was getting a little, a lot more funding and feedback from that, so I applied to the Mass Bridge Program. I think it was probably spring of '22, we got notified of award sometime in the middle of '22. Things really didn't ramp up, and ideas started to flow around until '23. At that point in time, I made sure that initial discussions with the engineer as well as initial discussions with the conservation commission when we first got awarded the grant. I mean, mainly it was, if we can, the biggest concern I had, and I let them know, was going to be able to try to make sure people could get underneath. And I know they went into that looking at this the whole way. The first set of schematic designs came out later in, later this spring and shared with all powers to be up here as well as the Broad Lakes Association whenever we first got them. And Broad Lakes Association, I kept them through pretty much the whole, the whole, through the whole process. As soon as we found out we had an award, any correspondence and stuff like that, I had, I forwarded off to Rod and he disseminated to whoever he loves. So then just a little bit of kickback on, you know, why can't we design it to have people be able to go under it? That's the question, so the, many engineers are here with us tonight, Greg from Pear, Kathy Dory from Mass DOT, who's actually the project supervisor. This is a Mass DOT project. Mass DOT hires the engineer, there's no cost to the town at this point in time. The theory is when the small bridge programs, which is anything over, over 18 feet, Kathy? Is that what it is? Or 15 feet is considered a small bridge?
Anything less than 20 feet is considered to be a small bridge.
So that's what qualifies us to be in this program. So with that, we're looking at, where to go next? The residents don't like the idea of a, the idea of a culvert, they're, they're not going to be able to go under it. That's one of the biggest. There is an issue with water flow. It's right now, it's not about any water flow right now, because there is debris in the middle of it between the two. It's been there for quite a while. But if we vary from, Mass DOT's scope for it is for a specific item, which is where we are on right now. If we vary from that, it's not like it's a bucket of money we can carry with us. If we vary from this, it goes away. The theory is once we're part of this program and you get to design stuff like that, we roll into the next part of the program, which will be a construction phase, which will also be funded by Mass DOT. I don't know the best thing to do, if you guys want to run over a little bit or answer or hear from somebody else's questions. But if we're here for guidance, if you guys, we either continue our path or we intend to relook at it.
And in terms of just the existing setup now, if the Beaver Dam weren't there, roughly how deep is the water through there?
It's low right now. I mean, it's, it's low. Right now, the water's lower than they call it together, so it's probably, I don't know how deep it would be if the dam wasn't there.
Inches or feet?
In '94, it was three feet deep.
Okay.
It's 12 inches to three, it's probably, it's probably inches, 20 inches.
Yeah.
Just, just, right.
So, so we're going to, we're going to have to follow some sort of process and protocol here, so we will get to questions?
I would say that's all I have to offer them all. Maybe if you want to entertain some other questions, then?
Why don't we do the presentation?
Or Pear, would you like to go talk a little bit about what, how you approach this project?
Yep. Yeah, so I think the first folks we'll hear from are those on Zoom, kind of with the technical expertise, and then we can start in with questions.
So does, Kathy, do you want to lead? You want to start off or?
Yeah, I will let, I will let Greg, the person who from Par Engineering who did the work, I will let him go over a chronology, chronology of what they did, and he will address some of the questions that we know that you have regarding the solution that we have. Greg?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Hi, I'm Greg Burbium with Par Corporation with the, I work in the bridge, bridge section of our company. We've been contracted by Mass DOT to do the design for this. When we first went out, I first met with Tom, when we first received notice of getting the, the project assigned to us under the Small Bridge Grant Program. We looked at, you know, the, the area there, and, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of constraints. One of them being the width of the roadway itself is narrow. The other problem is that there's really not much room around the area to work with. The banks, you know, along the edge of the road drop off pretty significantly. It's, it's something typical that we see a lot in this area of, of summer cottages that were essentially winterized, became four-season homes. So there's not much room to, to sort of work with in that area. The other problem we had was you've got power lines that hang pretty low over the bridge and that cross diagonally across the bridge. And the biggest constraint we had was the fact that you've got, you know, several homes on the other side of this bridge that would have access cut off to them during construction, during replacement of the bridge. We looked at several different types of bridges that would possibly work, precast options, precast concrete options, steel, you know, structural steel options, some other type of panelized systems and everything. And the big problem we have is access to this area. You know, one of the things we need to do is sort of maintain that hydraulic connectivity, more so to make sure that debris doesn't accumulate in that stretch, because it sort of necks down almost like an hourglass through that area. The, the big constraint that we had with, with being able to replace a bridge fairly rapidly and within the constraints that we have at the site became the main driver in what sort of, we sort of whittled down these options until we came to, you know, came up with the one that we, we presented to the, to the town. When you go with precast options was one of the, you know, one of the first choices we thought of was putting, you know, Tom had a good idea of putting a box culvert inside the bridge and that, that type of thing. The big problem we have there is crane access, because, you know, those, those type of structures will need a crane. It's going to be too heavy for an excavator that can fit down that road to, to place. So the problem we have with the crane is the road isn't wide enough to support the size crane that we would need, because they have outriggers that go to stabilize the crane. They would end up, we'd end up having to fill parts of the pond, take down the trees. A bigger one is move the power lines, and the question with moving the power lines is where do we move them to? Because they're right on the edge of the road, which is only a couple of feet from the edge of the water, so there's really not much room to move them. OSHA requires certain setback distances from the crane boom and everything to work, and it just would not work out with using a crane through there. The other, the other constraint that we noticed was getting these concrete, heavy concrete sections to, to the site would require them being loaded on a tractor trailer. The problem getting to be is that the tractor trailer access is very difficult, because you would have, there's no place for a tractor trailer to turn around, so we would have to back down that length of road to be able to do that. That would be, first of all, not, not fun for the guy driving the truck. The second of all, very, very time consuming, because you'd probably only drop off maybe two pieces a day, because it would take a long time to back a truck, a tractor trailer, a loaded tractor trailer down that road. So we looked at the concrete and said, okay, well, that, that might not work quite as, as well as we wanted to. So we looked for another option that was lighter and was able to actually be shipped in, you know, on smaller trucks as well as being set with a smaller excavator. So we came up with the aluminum, the aluminum pipe. And what we would do is we're looking at, we can maybe increase the size of the aluminum pipe. When you get to certain sizes of pipe, they go in six-inch increments, so every part is bigger. But the aluminum pipe would allow us to be able to ship those pieces in and set them with light equipment that would not require trimming trees, having to fill inside the pond temporarily, having to relocate the, the power lines. They could put those in. They would also be able to put this in, because it is light, they'd be able to put it in ahead of time while the bridge still stays in service. So the wing walls would sort of go outside the roadway a little bit. They would build those walls that will hold back the soil. They'd put the pipe in, and while the bridge is still in service, they could fill essentially up to the bottom of the bridge. And then you pick a day, we would close down the road for the one day, you would pull off the existing bridge structure, take down the concrete walls a little bit, and then fill the rest. And by the end of the day, you would have a roadway. It wouldn't be paved, whichever roadway at least would be passable. Sometimes when we do projects like this, we do, we have extended closures where we can, can make arrangements to get across the, the crossing. But the problem with that comes to be when you need to have first responders get to the site. If somebody's house catches on fire, it's a medical emergency or something, the waiting for a boat to go across the pond really isn't feasible. Sometimes we will put a, a, a fire truck on the other side, but that's not, we're not able to do that because we can't, first of all, drive the fire truck over the, over that bridge, and we can't get a crane to pick one up and place it over the bridge. So that counts as those out. So to do the precast option, if we were to do it, would take several weeks to do. With, with doing it with the option that we have, it essentially only require one day of disruption for roadway traffic. Most of the work could be done underneath the bridge and then outside the bridge to, to finish up. So that's sort of the option that we came to. I know it doesn't allow canoe access, kayak access through there during low-flow times. With the amount of sediment that's built up underneath the bridge, I'm not so sure how much, how much flow you really have underneath there, even if the Beaver Dam was removed, because there's quite a bit of sediment. We didn't want to modify any of the bridge substructures or anything temporarily while we're doing work, chip away some of the concrete, because we don't quite know what exactly it's made of, but I can tell by looking at it that it would not be stable on today's loads anyway, and I would not want to jeopardize any kind of movement or vibration on that bridge, because there's not much left holding that bridge together. So we would be, you know, and then we'd be in a different situation if that, we were to compromise the superstructure and we weren't able to, to travel across that. So that's sort of where we got to this point today, so to give you a background on that.
Fabulous. Thank you very much. So it sounds like we have?
Can I just ask one more question of the state?
Yeah, absolutely.
Kathy, this is, this is for you more than anybody else. If the town fears away from this proposed solution, what happens as far as Mass DOT?
The best that we can do is I can direct Par to look at a bigger diameter, a 60-inch diameter pipe. Anything above and beyond that drops you out of this program, and it's something that you would have to either pay to have somebody design for yourself or apply to have it put into the regular system, into our regular, regular construction schedule, and that could take 10 to 15 years. I'm not too sure your bridge is going to last that long, but unfortunately, we have, if you go to small towns around the state, you'll notice that some of them are down to one lane and some of them are closed, and that gives, gives them no closer to be put on the list to, to be designed and constructed under the regular programs, Mass DOT program.
Thank you. I think that's important information for the board to have.
Yep, absolutely.
At this point, they'll fund it.
At this point, they'll fund it, Greg.
Awesome. I'm trying to ground myself in the, in the numbers we're going to be maybe talking about.
Yep.
One is, what is this bridge? What's, what's the probable cost of the state's, what is the money the state is going to give us or they're going to, they're going to spend to build this bridge? Is it like a half million dollars or whatever?
Do you have, do you have an estimate?
Ballpark. I'm just trying to understand.
Right now, we're looking at, with this option here is about $400,000. Keep in mind, the, the Small Bridge Program pays for up to $500,000 of that construction cost. After that, it's going to spell his responsibility. Something to be aware of is, and, and, you know, infrastructure construction costs have followed the, the trending costs of everything in our lives, so you're looking at this bridge would probably be in the $2 million range if it was going to be a regular bridge. Unfortunately, that's what things are costing these days. It's not uncommon to have a 15, 20 million dollar bridge anymore. It's unfortunate, but that used to be an exception. Now it's, it's a rule. So you'd be looking at a very significant cost difference.
Okay. That was my second question. What would it cost if we didn't take this? So it'd be $500,000, which they pay for, and no cost to the town? And then somewhere around $2 million if we decide to build?
Well, if, if we decide to do it ourselves, it would be $2 million. Kathy also pointed out that if we wanted to get back on the state's regular list to have the state continue to pay for it, we could look at 10 to 15 years.
Right, okay.
So that's important, all important information.
Yep.
It's related question, though. If you're going to proceed with the current proposal, does it disqualify us to get on the list for a permanent, more permanent solution in terms? Because this problem is not going to go away. I suspect with the solution that is currently proposed, it's going to alleviate the problem for the time being, but I would want to make sure that we are not disqualifying ourselves to go and have a great field.
No, this is, I guess the question mark is that?
No, I think, I think if we do this solution to the state, that is the permanent solution.
That's the permanent solution, yeah.
Correct.
So you wouldn't do the second?
So you want to do the second solution?
Unless you want to, unless you want, yeah, right.
Sorry. Just as a, just as, just as a follow-up, what is the life expectancy on this work? I guess maybe?
Greg would have to answer that question.
Yep.
Everything we design is to a minimum of 75-year design life. For some, but these aluminum structures will give you 75 years, longer than any of us have to worry about.
And does the $2 million, is that just construction? Does it also cover design, environmental permitting?
No, that, that would just be the bridge, bridge construction. The design of that would end up being around $300,000 or so for the fee of that as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So in, in going to the public, I guess? Yeah. Thank you. So I would, I would hope that there's kind of some coordinated fashion here. I don't know whether there are specific folks here for the Lakes Association or, great. So maybe that's the starting point, and if we could just kind of keep things as brief as possible.
Thank you. I'm Ron Hirsch, not Rod. I'm president of the Groton Lakes Association and a member of the Great Ponds Advisory Committee. We have a long history of working with various town and state departments on maintaining and improving the health of the lake. And back in October, we sent a letter to Mark and to Tom indicating our interest in knowing what was going on and participating in the project. Around the same time, we also were in the process of submitting two different grants to the state to apply for monies to do remediation of the runoff from the water basin into the lakes. And one of the things that had been pointed out in the past as a significant problem of runoff was right around that bridge. That's a highlighted spot. So when the gentleman finally talked about there being three feet of water underneath the lake in 1994, that might very well be true, and the fact that it's so shallow today has to do with the significant runoff right at that bridge. And our concern at the time was that we wanted to be participants in the design process so that at the same time that a new bridge was built, we would ameliorate, work towards ameliorating the runoff that causes the thing to be blocked aside from the beavers. Okay? We did not really get much of a response about cooperating. What we met with Tom and, I'm sorry, and his ass. I'm sorry, and his assistant-
Brian.
Brian.
Brian last week, I'm sorry, Brian. We basically were told that essentially what Tom presented tonight, that this was the only option on the table, and that if it weren't to happen, we would probably lose the funding and it would take a significant amount of time. And our problem is multifolded, but I think that the Department of Transportation is only looking at what is their responsibility. Do it quickly and do it cheaply. They're not looking at the environmental issues, nor the long-term maintenance costs. Let me talk about the long-term maintenance costs. I'm not an engineer, I'm a financial manager and a licensed psychologist.
I think it's probably more appropriate to ask Greg, our engineer, to talk to those.
Okay, but I'm not going to talk about that. What I'm talking about is the fact that last week in the Boston Globe, there was a long story about the long-term cost of maintaining culverts and how the state was pulling out culverts all over the state in streams and rivers. Now, I suppose that we're going to experience similar problems as they do. Number two, it didn't take into account the environmental issues. That opening between Knops Pond and Lost Lake is a significant place for water flow to come through, and when the water does not flow through there, as is happening right now due to the beavers, it causes the water on the Knops, on the Lost Lake side to become stagnant. And that cove right around there, even though we've treated the lake with the support of the town over the years, has become a significant problem in terms of weed growth and the treatments that we do are inhibited because we don't have sufficient water flow. So I'll let the engineers now, I'll let Alex speak about some of the environmental issues, but we invite anybody to come down there and take a look at what that specific part of the lake on the, on the Knops, on the Lost Lake side looks like compared to the other side because of the, the lack of flow of water. So we're concerned about long-term maintenance costs, who's going to pay for that if we have a, a inefficient solution? More importantly, in the short run, what are we going to do to protect that area from significant runoff? We don't think the solution does that. And three, what are we going to do to enhance the water flow between the two sides of the lake? When you put in a 54-inch culvert, of which a couple of inches at the bottom of it, we were told, have to have gravel to hold it down, it essentially means that there would be no water flow between the two lakes. So I rested that and passed it on to people that have questions or anybody else that wants a chat.
Yep, so at that point, I think I'll take those questions, Greg, to you, if you can speak to, kind of at a high level, the maintenance costs or concerns, the erosion impacts, and then the hydraulic connection, don't they?
Right, right, sure, yeah, yeah. In a case like this, when we have a pond, I mean, we did a pretty thorough hydraulic analysis, what this does is basically balances flow between both sides, so between the Lost Pond and the Knops Pond side, Lost Lake, is it? Knops Pond. And basically what we need to do is just move water through there so that area doesn't stagnate through there. One of the problems we have, of course, is the beaver dams, that's a, that's an issue. You're going to have, in New England, always, so that's always a, no matter what you put there, you're always going to have, once they, once they find they like that spot, they, they tend to stay there. So that's an ongoing maintenance issue. The siltation and the sediment, which is pretty, pretty pronounced through here in this area, because you've got a pretty good-sized hump underneath the bridge through there, that, you know, when we do our, our roadway plans, we, we try to, there's more stormwater enhancements that we do now in place, such as allowing the sediment and stuff to filter as it runs down the sides from the road. In this case here, you don't have a lot of room to treat any of this, you have basically the pavement and it drops right off. So there's not a lot of room to, to take advantage of that, so we do the best we can because then we run into problems that we don't want to start filling within the pond because then that gets you to another level of oversight that tends to, you know, you, it will slow things down and also drive costs up quite a bit through there. Now, as far as looking at like the size of the culvert and everything else, the flow that goes through there, we, we put the gravel bottom, you know, in there, not only because it really, it's not really not to hold the culvert down as much as it's to give a natural bottom that's required by the Massachusetts stream crossing standards. One of the things is talked about how Massachusetts is pulling out a lot of culverts, that's true, but a lot of that has to do with aquatic and terrestrial activity. So a lot of it is done because a lot of these culverts are put in place and they now prevent normal activity for, for, you know, fish, amphibians, and, and land, you know, land mammals from going across the culvert. It also, a lot of these culverts in the day were put in, they were undersized. As far as flows, three feet and everything else, what you, what you're going to notice is today, flows aren't much, when it rains, it rains a lot now, it doesn't, it doesn't rain like it used to. The summers get drier than they used to, so there's a lot, things are a lot different than what a lot of these structures were, were constructed, so that's what their program's for. There is, every town has a multitude of deficient crossing structures, whether it be culverts or bridges, you can see that on the news everywhere, it's just like this across the country. What this program's trying to do is replace these essentially so we can maintain this crossing, because if you, if this bridge goes out, then the people that live on the other side no longer have access to their properties. And the time down, when that happens to come up and replacement, will generally be less environmentally friendly and much more expensive to do that. So this program is basically aiming to, to prevent getting to that point, to do it, and replace it with a structure that will give you basically, you know, a lifetime of performance, and will still perform its function. So hydraulically, it still performs its function as it is, as this is, because we don't need that much flow through there, because with the bigger bridge and the other stuff, most of the stuff was dry anyway, so that doesn't contribute to your hydraulic connection.
And it was only dry for the last 10 years.
So is there anything, Greg, excuse me, Greg, is there anything that we could put in through the culvert as kind of a secondary, smaller pipe that would enable that flow to continue without being subject to beavers, or is that just going to be a constant battle?
I mean, there are, there are ways to shape the invert and things like that to, to allow more by, you can make a little pipe a little bit bigger so we can lower that invert a little bit. I think, you know, sedimentation's always going to be an issue, it is with every bridge, you know, unless you can have a situation where you can completely design it, you know, correctly, that's very few and far between in New England. I mean, you know, we're dealing with a built environment where, where these crossings were put in to suit a need at the time they were put in, and now people have built around them. So to put in a larger bridge here, you know, not only would, would cost, you know, a significant amount of money, but also have environmental impacts as well that would need to be addressed that would then drive up the cost of that project, as well as the tertiary effects, such as access to, to property, the cost of moving utilities, you know, it's about $55,000 to $60,000 to move a utility pole out. When you have to move four or five of them, you're looking at spending a quarter of a million dollars to move a telephone line over. So there's, there's a lot of other issues that we look at that, you know, we try to avoid just to keep, you know, because what we, we have a fiduciary duty to make sure we get you the, the structure you need at, you know, a cost you can afford. So that's why we went with this option, so, you know, this, this way you would not have to bear that cost, the extra $2 million of building this, this bridge, you know, on your own.
Thank you. All right, Art?
Excuse me, this is Kathy, I just want to, want to wind this up a little bit. Greg and PAR Engineering has done the, the extents of the hydraulic and environmental permitting that is required for this size of bridge. So we can't, under this program, we really can't have them expand on any of that stuff. And one thing I want to clarify is that we put the gravel bases in the pipes so that when the district, and the district will be the ones maintaining this. When the district goes out there and inspect it and they see silt instead of gravel, they'll know it needs to be dredged out. And so that is really the purpose, not only to, to, maybe to protect that surface a little bit, but as the indication for the inspector that this is starting to fill up and we need to dredge that out because this is not the base that we put in there when it was constructed.
Good point.
That's all I have.
That's an important point, that one of the points that was raised is long-term maintenance. Mast D O T would be the maintenance, be no additional cost to the taxpayers abroad. I think that's important. Thank you for saying that, Kathy.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
I'm Art Preston, I live on that total that we talked about. One of the things I didn't hear in this whole discussion from D O T about the design, they never mentioned doing an analysis of the water flow and what the environmental ecological impact would be if the water flow was reduced from what it used to be under the previous bridge that didn't have a beaver dam. Now, we, we can blame the beaver dam for recent problems, but I've been on that cove for the last 15 years, this is the first year I've seen a beaver dam block that bridge. So I would like to see what your analysis was of the water flow with the various alternatives, whether it be a bridge or a culvert, because my understanding right now is that culvert, that 53-inch culvert, would not have nearly the water flow that was, was going underneath that bridge before the beaver dam. And if you look at the, my cove, my cove is a disaster right now. We've got weeds and things growing in there that weren't there a year ago. And 12 years ago, Alex Will and I spent two years getting rid of the weeds in the lake, and now that cove is starting to look like what it did 12 years ago because there is no water flow. Now, my cove is spring fed, so there's a lot of water coming up from the bottom of my cove, and that water, it goes into the larger pond, larger park of Knops Pond underneath that bridge. So have you done any analysis of the water flow and what the ecological, environmental impact would be with reduced water flow because of the 53-inch culvert?
Uh, yeah, I'll answer that one, but yes, we did, that's why we came up with the size that we had, we looked at the original bridge, we did not take into account the, the siltation. We do our analysis, we look at it in a few stages, so we look at it as its existing condition now, the way it stands, we look at it as the, basically the as-designed condition that it should have been, and then we come up with a solution that provides the equivalent amount of flow through there, and the pipe provides the equivalent amount of flow that's needed to flush that area, you know, to flush out that area. So that was investigated.
You didn't provide any analysis, don't you, to that, my-
Can we hear that?
You just said you didn't, you didn't provide any data.
Yeah. So I don't think tonight we're going to go through calculations for different hydraulic solutions, but, so I guess other, Art, I see you handing stuff out, what are you?
Thank you. By the way, I did get approval last week from the Conservation Commission to remove that beaver dam. They're going to say that they do prefer, if you were to be again. Because that is a problem right now.
Yep, so Art has just passed out some photos, one of the beaver dam and then several others of just the Knops, I was just summarizing what you've passed out for folks, the cove.
You can see all the weeds, right?
Yep, absolutely. Other questions or comments from the public? Alex and then Al.
Good evening, and thank you for our two guests for showing up for this informational meeting tonight. I had a presentation all prepared, but most of it's been broadcast, you've already heard it. It's more of a historical perspective of one issue that I haven't heard fully addressed and was brought up by Mr. Hirsch in our last engineer this. We're working to stop or halt or reduce the stormwater runoff in this area, it's probably the most egregious area around the whole lake, we have a lot of them, but this is the most egregious. Tom, when we talked, said that this issue would be addressed. I have not heard that issue addressed tonight, I've only heard dredging when it gets too shallow. That's too late already because the, the phosphorus and other nutrients will be washed in from the roadside. So is there a plan in your design that's going to take care and mitigate the stormwater runoff? Thank you.
Well, we do design, because we, we, we have the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards as well as the town's Stormwater Standards that we need to design too, so we look at the best ways to treat that. Generally speaking, in a, in a situation like this where we have such narrow shoulders, we generally tend to go with what used to be called filter strips, but ways to filter out the sediment, and basically along the shoulders before it runs down the embankment because, you know, closed drainage and things like that, first of all, aren't, aren't, aren't really practical in a situation like this, especially when you're so close to the water because they don't work well. With it, they also require, you know, significant amount of, of, of real estate to sort of take up and, and deal with, with the outfalls with them. We look to go with what's called a country drainage, so we take the sheet flow, we look to sort of impede it a little bit as it flows, so what that does is it not only traps the sediment as it runs off the road, but it also gives the, the water a chance to percolate into the soil so it doesn't directly run into the pond, so that way we will rely on the embankment structure itself to act as like a, a filter, almost, almost like a leeching field. So that's the approach we normally take at these, these projects, we're at the 25% phase, so that usually occurs, we will do that when we move to the 100% design.
How much maintenance is going to be required for that type of system? Is that going to be every month?
No, no, it's generally, ideally every, annually, it, it's, it's essentially with, with sand and sediment removal that's normally done. One of the things I do note is that as most towns send the gravel to take away from sand and go towards the chloride-based de-icing chemicals, we see, see less and less of the sediment building up, more so than used to in years past, so it's a little bit easier to keep on top of. But then they just, basically the same thing like Kathy said, it's, it happens on top too, it's the same thing, when you start to see sediment building up in these areas, they know it's time to clean that out, and you rake it out, and you clean it out and sweep it up.
So would the proposed culvert, will that runoff problem be lessened from what it is currently?
It should be, yes.
Okay. Val?
Excuse me, this is Kathy, I just want, you know, that we're doing the best that we can, you have to realize that under this program, that, that we don't go through the entire roadway or around the entire cove or around the entire lake, and so what we're doing does not preclude any type of grant you might get for some extensive study of the runoff that you're getting from the whole area. Remember, we are just doing a little 100-foot section here and trying to improve it and not make the problem, not make this, excuse me, make the situation any worse, or in our particular case, improving it just a little bit. This, the program does not allow us to, to study the entire area and the runoff from all the roadway, all these areas into these different areas, as well as take into account the existence of the dam and stuff like that, we're just trying to keep this bridge open for you. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate that, thank you.
Can I ask you a couple of quick questions? I haven't heard, so I guess my first question is-
Can you identify yourself?
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, Sanford, Lebanon, I live at 50 Island Road. It's called Island Road because we live on an island. So I'm a little concerned that putting a cement culvert box between the two pieces of land will ultimately be getting not an island for one, but number two, as these people have already explained, that's been a water passage, it's been free-flowing water underneath that bridge for years, like, you know, eight years, whatever, and now all of a sudden you want to just close it off, okay? It's not falling right now because a river otter built his house underneath it or whatever, but that should be removed and it should be, you know, dredged out so that the water can flow properly, not put a concrete box in there with a little tube with some grates on the end of it.
So we're not talking about putting a concrete box culvert in and we're not talking about closing this off, we're talking about a 54-inch culvert?
Culvert, right, which is closing it off, it's, you're going to have like six inches of water, what happens when they drain the lake in the, in the fall? What happens when they drain the lake in the, in the fall? It's going to go down, I mean, to the point where there'd be no water flow at all, you know? And the lake doesn't freeze completely. I mean, there's, you know, especially the last several winters, there's been water on the surface forever. Okay? So, I, I guess, then, then, I mean, that's my number one issue, that and that. And I, I can't believe for a minute that the Conservation Commission, I mean, if I go and I try to put a few rocks next to the water in my house, I mean, yelled that, we're talking about completely changing the dynamic of ecosystem by putting in this box culvert. I mean, I don't, I don't understand where they are at this. Uh, but my last question is that this project that is funded, um, you say we lose our funding if we go another direction. Why can't we get fund, take that money and apply it towards whatever we do?
That's not how it works.
Yeah, of course it's not. No, that would be too much.
Excuse me, this is Kathy. Can you pull up the cross-section so you see what the opening that we're proposing is going to be compared to the opening that you have now? And so, everybody gets a better idea of what we're actually proposing here, please?
Is that the right one?
No, the cross-section.
No, the next one with the cross-section that shows you, no, the one after that.
Keep going.
Nope, okay. This one right here.
Yep. Right. So, there's still significant, you know, that, that's showing twelve inches of water flow. There's connectivity, there's flow. Again, it's not a box culvert, concrete structure, so.
May I speak now?
You're going to have to get closer to the microphone though.
First of all, how many of you on the board have been?
Val, you need a microphone.
Don't use this thing.
I don't think it's going to pick up that far away.
Val.
There we go.
I'm having to use two hands for what I'm going to do. And if I can speak loud enough, I'm pretty sure this can hear me. Okay, I guess we've got it now. Um, what I want to emphasize is how many of you have seen or been on the lake first? Okay. I had the pleasure of working with Mark on the fire station. And he had drawings from the engineer who laid out the whole parking area that was to be used. And it failed. I stepped in and came up with a solution that worked and it is still working. I feel the same way about this culvert. It will not work. Why? Because the lake normally is at elevation two hundred thirteen feet when it is the summer. Obviously, rain changes that elevation slightly. In the fall, you all know that we draw down two foot six for the winter. So, when we have an invert elevation of two eleven point three three to the bottom of that fifty-four inch aluminum culvert with twelve inches of sand on the bottom of it, we end up with a maximum of eight inches of water flowing above the sand, which is nowhere near what we need for the control of weeds. When it's in the winter, it draws down to elevation two ten, which puts it ten inches below the invert of that culvert. No water flow once the lake is drawn down, period. The other part of this is that because that culvert is down that low, they would have to put in something outside on both ends of that work area because they would be, would be below even the winter level. And they would have to pump water out in order to go and put in what they want. The aluminum walls and the aluminum culvert, that's an expense. It's not mentioned. Then, I looked at it and I've been there since forty-six. I'm a youngster. And I had my civil structural license up until the end of the June that we just passed. So, I'm still a civil structural engineer with experience who knows what he's doing. So, what I did was I looked at that bridge in a fashion of keeping it. How many people here know that I was the one who repaired the dam that controls the water in our lake? I was given those drawings that were done by another engineer and I felt that they were not adequate to the purpose. And so, what I did was I came up with a new design that put six inches of concrete on the face of the dam with wire mesh reinforcing and staples into the face of the dam. That took out all of the spalling and some of the cracking that was in that dam. And then, I had them coat it with an epoxy up to the high-water level. That was done in two thousand, year two thousand. This is twenty-four years later and it's still in fine condition. I want the same thing for this bridge. I want it to flow with water to take care of the weed problem. I want people to pass under it like we used to do when I was a youngster. And to do that, I came up with the concept of using pre-stress, pre-cast concrete planks. There's only eight feet between the faces of those two walls. So, yes, this is a short bridge. And I might end up with twelve to fifteen-foot-long planks, four feet wide. They weigh a couple of tons. All four of them would be on a truck that has its own crane so we don't worry about the water. I mean, the power lines overhead, we'll never reach them. I've been on job sites watching them do this. The crane is low. It grabs the plank, swings around and puts it in place. Those trucks can back down two hundred yards because they can't turn around. But remember, that location also has a fire setup. Probably eight years ago now, I was one of the two that, and went around the entire lake looking for places that we could put fire pumps. And if you go out a hundred yards or two hundred feet, you can find lots of places, but that's not a place to be putting fire pumps that far offshore. The only place we found was right next to the bridge. And they put in a well, but not a pump. They expected the fire trucks to have suction, uh, suction enough to get the water out. Those trucks don't have it. So, that's not a place that's being used. But I told them, put in a pump station and that would suck the water out and put it into the trucks for fighting the fires or they could run a hose down. That is the sort of thing I've tried to do for a lot of town projects. And on this one, if you use the plank, the concrete plank, um, it's better actually if I kind of do a little demonstration here. The walls that are there have frames that are like this, not the conventional same width on each side. It's because when you put down a wall like this and you're trying to load it, you want the soil that's piled up here to keep it from tipping over. And that's what that soil does that's part of the road. And you have one on each side. If you try to use a concrete culvert that's shaped like this and you try to put it in between, you may leave some space. You may make it tight against the walls. But the problem is that crane can't lift this without the power lines being removed. So, I felt that's not the solution. The solution is the pre-stress, pre-cast planks that can be put on top of a repaired wall. I've been after information about those walls as to the reinforcing in them and hopefully get information about the footing. I have not found that yet. But that's nothing to say we can't go in with these little special tools. They do a, a ramming and you hit it five times. This is a manual tool. And that will record the strength of the concrete. You can repeat it and average it. You can move anywhere you want on the whole concrete surface and get the strength. Then, if you use a radar-type technology, you can locate and size the reinforcing that's in that wall. And that's another handheld instrument. And that gives you the information about the existing wall. I repaired the concrete dam. I can repair this. Now, as far as the concrete plank is concerned, once that is designed to also incorporate maybe six-inch cast-in-place concrete on top, that would allow, and you use fast curing concrete, that would allow you to take one day to fix the wall, one, put in some anchors, which you usually do that after you place the plank. Then you put some reinforcing on top of the plank and you cast your wall. Now, there's a couple more days. Then you're looking at putting conventional asphalt after you've compacted the soils over here and there. And now you've got asphalt paving sitting on top of the con, cast-in-place concrete. You can install the railings. I figured maybe two weeks to get all of this done. I haven't got a price, but the timeframe from experience, I'm saying it would be about two weeks. And for the people on the island, I am talking to people on the mainland, including myself. Yes? And what we would do is take some parking space on our property and let them put their car there. And they take their boat and tie it to our dock so that they can go to work or any other place they want, any time of the day or night. We on the mainland are helping those on the island if it takes two weeks to do the job. The concrete plank lets the water flow like it has for the last hundred years. The concrete plank, once everything is built and that concrete which is exposed, like the dam, can be coated with epoxies that are waterproof. And they have a little bit of stretching capability because things deflect when loads go across. So, we don't spall the concrete. We protect it. Twenty-five years and no problems with the dam? I suspect we'd have a similar situation here. Everything that man has built throughout the entire world requires maintenance. How often? Depends upon how well you treated it in the few years you did nothing. And that is my story and I'm sticking with it. There's what I think is this well. I suspect the price won't be a whole lot different. And this concrete plank can be done any time of the year. No big necessities to be pumping wire out to make room. Get rid of the beaver's dam, dig out some of the stuff that's flowed in there from erosion and you've brought the bridge back to what it was a hundred years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So, it sounds like, I guess, to Greg and Kathy, the primary concern is kind of the hydraulic connectivity, water movement and weed, you know, ramifications thereof. If you were to, it sounded like earlier Kathy, you had suggested you could go from a fifty-four to a sixty-inch culvert. Would that gain us a little more water depth? What are your thoughts, Greg? How would it be?
No, it wouldn't. It would just open it up a little bit more. Um, I think one of the things to point out is the, the invert we're showing for that culvert, um, as far as the stream bed invert matches the top of the footing that's out there. So, the amount of water that goes through there, any time of year will not be any different through here. Um, I think, uh, what the gentleman said about them drawing down the water, this bridge would always be dry, looking at what the, the existing topography is, the symmetry, if you want to call it, that, as well as the tops of the footings. The other thing is that the footings that, as they are constructed, do not meet current design standards. So, the, the footings, the abutments themselves, so the abutments would have to be reconstructed. Uh, we could strengthen the abutments. Abutments in this condition would not be economically feasible to strengthen. I, they're, they're too old and, um, I think too, too, too far in their, their years to really warrant, um, reconstructing or strengthening or tying back or anything else. So, they'd have to be replaced. Uh, the time to take that, to replace all of that is, you know, months. Uh, would take, generally speaking, a bridge takes an entire construction season to do. Because we have, when we do concrete, we also have curing times that we need to worry about as well to make sure the concrete's strong enough to, to support the loads for the next piece you build on it. The, the, the concrete planks, um, while they would work, the abutments themselves don't support that. So, we're looking again at, at the, the, the time, like we talk about about ferrying people back and forth. I'm not so sure the people who, the residents who live there, um, what their thoughts are on that. But again, um, I know if it was my house that was on fire on that side of the island, I wouldn't be terribly happy about having to wait for the fire department to get there because when the bridge is being constructed and out, they can't get across that, that opening. So, we can talk about running hoses and pumping and all this other stuff, but they will not be able to do that. That island will like be an island. It'll be isolated. Um, there will be no access to it for whatever time it may be, days, weeks, months, whatever. It doesn't matter. Um, the, you know, so we looked at it also from a, basically from a safety standpoint. If there's a medical emergency or a fire emergency or any other kind of emergency, um, there's some serious issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. This is Kathy. I just want to expound on a few things. Um, he did a very good job as far as determining the, telling you how easy it is to determine the, the capacity of the concrete and the steel. And that's really not our concern. What we're really concerned about is the bearing capacity and what is beneath the footing. First of all, the footing shouldn't be exposed that much. It indicates that there's already been a scour issue there. Um, typically when it was, I, I don't really too sure it was designed, but you shouldn't see the top of that footing when it was completed. I'm guessing it was underground. What we're more concerned about is the bearing capacity underneath. And that's what concerns us the most. And that's the hardest thing to determine um, as far as you'd have to do, um, you know, uh, soil, soil pourings and stuff like that. And that's a little bit beyond the scope of this project. Not that it couldn't be done, but after looking at the pictures, um, like Greg said, and I'm a structural as well, um, I would say that I would not put my PE stamp on putting planks on top of this and we can't expect, um, a consultant engineer to do that without some significant testing with that. Like I said, the concrete and the, and the rebar spacing and that kind of stuff is all good and that kind of stuff. But if Greg says, and there are no existing plans that Mass DOT has, they have already done that. And so, we really don't know what's down there. We just assume that it's... We just assume that it's some kind of timber cribbing and stuff like that, which is not really going to be valid. And so we can't really, we would not, Mass DOT would not reuse those abutments the way that they are because there's too many indications that they're inadequate. And we wouldn't put money into proving that because it's obvious by looking at it, as Greg indicated. And I've seen a few pictures. Honestly, I have not been there, but I wouldn't put my PE stamp on those as D C abutments. And the third thing is Mass DOT does not put any money into a project that's not going to last a minimum of 75 years. We're not going to, we're not going to, you know, Band-Aid and barbed wire things together to do that kind of stuff. We want calculations, and positively, we want 75 years out of this repair that we're doing. It doesn't seem like a lot of money to you, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars for design and less than a half a million for construction. And that's not a lot of money for a specific bridge. But you have to appreciate that, you know, the demand that there is, the hundreds of bridges that we have that require this type of thing to just keep them in service. And we do not pay for anything that does not keep that bridge open for another 75 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, one question to you potentially. What is the reasoning to draw down the water in the winter?
Tom can answer that.
It's to help combat weeds. So whatever the, you probably.
Also to protect the shoreline and the people.
I'm sorry, Tommy's speaking. Good wait.
I knew it was added to what you're saying.
You need to wait.
So that being part of it, most of it is also for the weed control. The frost will not kill that weed. That's why a lot of times you don't see any, when it gets cold enough in winter, you don't see any weeds, you know, six, eight feet from shore.
Thank you.
Also to protect the docks.
Yes, Kathy, a question for you. You're in charge of, you work within deep Mass DOT's small bridge program. And we're all aware of the bipartisan infrastructure bill that was passed, which has a huge amount of money. And I know if I looked it up correctly, Massachusetts garnished about $300 million for bridges. Most of them are for main bridges. Another category was off-system, which I don't know what that means. But would this town qualify for this? Or are we then looking at the same 10- to 15-year period of trying to even get through a list?
Yeah. Technically, your bridge would be an off-system because it's not on a roadway that's owned and maintained by Mass DOT. It's not, you know, Route 128, oh, okay. It's not like Route 62 or Route 133 or Route 24 that are actually state routes. And so those are considered on-system. Yours would be considered off-system because it's a local road. And so that would be your, the classification for this particular structure. And like I said, you absolutely can do that. You absolutely can put in an application for it and get on the list for, you know, for that type of, you know, that type of funding. It just does not comply with the municipal small bridge. And like I said, you'd have to do an application for that and get on to the, get into line as far as those go. And I'm not really too sure how much of that funding's going to be available when yours comes up. I really, honestly, I don't know all of their criteria that they use to determine which bridges that they're going to cover, you know, whether it's the annual daily traffic, if it's amount of people served, that kind of stuff. I really honestly have no idea what criteria that they use to determine who's up next and which ones are the most critical at this time. But yours would be an off-system bridge.
So would the town apply for that?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. You know, I'd have to find out some additional information for you as far as who does that. The town, what you would do is you'd want to go to your district office. Tom?
Yep.
What you'd want, if it comes down to that. Or, Mark, what you want to do is you would want to go to your district office and find out the information that you need to do that. More than likely, we don't recommend the town do it themselves, that you actually hire a consultant to do it. Unfortunately, the district, Mass DOT district, is not available to fill out that paperwork for you. And so there would be a cost associated with that as you fill out that paperwork and get that into, for consideration.
Alison, can I ask a question? Kathy, what's, how long, if this board decides they want to take us under advisement and discuss it and look into issues, how long are we eligible to stay in the small bridge program before we would lose our place?
Oh, that is really, if you tell me, Kathy, we need six months, then you can certainly, I can certainly ask about that. I'm thinking, you know, six months would give us enough time to do that. We have extended, Par does, just recently got three more bridges to do after this year because this one is supposed, this, yours is in the first round of bridges that should be done in March. And I'm, by done, I mean through and ready to be bid. As long as you get to me by, you know, in six months or something like that, you'll never really run out of time.
Okay.
We can have you put in, if you just let me know that you need more time, I can get you put in the second round and push one of their, the bridges up into the first round so they can start working on that and get that to us by March.
Okay.
If you need more time. No, you don't, it's not like, okay, you have 10 minutes, Mark, and then you have to call me. That's not, that's not how it works. We will happy to do it, but we'd like to know if you don't want to do it. There are plenty of towns who would do this. And like I said, right now, we can move one of their, what, a different towns up into the order, which means yours is, yours would probably, if you don't let me know soon, yours would not go out for construction in March of next year, like it's proposed to do. It would probably go out March the following year is really the only, only drawback that it would. I mean, if you get it to us soon enough, we may be able to get you in and get you a bid date in like July and August, and that would allow us to get most of the stuff done before, you know, the construction season ends. So no, there is no, there's no, you know.
It just delays, it could delay, it could delay it, yes. So Tom, I guess my question to you.
It could, but you do not have unlimited amount of time.
Oh, no, I got that, I got that. So thank you, Kathy. So Tom, my question to you is, we've double-plated that. How safe is what's our solution out there right now? Because I was out there the other day and a truck went over that, and I got nervous, so.
Fortunately, we do have inspections every month. They notice and find changes. There have not been any changes since we welded some plates together out there. I don't have an answer unless we hired another structural engineer to look at that kind of stuff. I don't have an answer for that except.
But it is inspected, it is inspected monthly.
It's, they do an inspection monthly on it.
That's another important point I think is to know.
One last question. What would the implications be of going to the 60-inch culvert versus the 54? Why didn't you recommend that to begin with?
Me myself here? Okay. Yeah, the reason why we went to the smaller culvert is basically to allow the contractor a little bit more wiggle room in there, mostly, just for ease of construction. I mean, we can go to the 60-inch culvert, it just makes things a little bit tighter. But that's really the only reason why, was for constructability, just to make things a little bit easier so things would go slightly more, you know, smoothly during the installation.
If you put in the 60-inch, would you have to dig down underneath to keep the road bed even? Would it also go down six inches further, allowing some more water flow?
We would split the difference in that. I think we'd try and, we'd lower it as much as we could. What we don't want to do is, Kathy already alluded to the footing being exposed. We don't want to undermine the footing, especially when you have a wet condition where there's water, groundwater present underneath the footing. You don't want to undermine that footing because you have a chance of pulling material out from underneath there. The footings aren't big to begin with. So we don't want to go too deep. And we also don't want to, because when you increase the diameter, you don't want to go out too much wider either because we don't want to start chipping at those footings. Because we do not want any vibrations because I think the rust is probably the only thing holding that bridge together at this point.
All right, so let's pull it back to the boards, I guess, at this point. It sounds like it, kind of do a quick summary. We can go with the current proposal, which sounds like it has some flaws and concerns, but is kind of a guaranteed half a million dollar solution in a timeframe that's advantageous.
With a 75-year life expectancy.
Right, where we can kind of push off further, at which point we would probably be expected to cover the cost, whatever it may be, on our own. So I guess first I would turn to FinCom for any comments on the financial aspects of it.
If it doesn't go out, I mean, if the bridge is going to last, i.e. for a year, without falling down, maybe there's, you know, a further review of, I just, my problem is that I don't think that if we come down to this bridge, which the state's going to pay for, or you say we're going to spend $2 million or some other bridge we're going to design, the timing is a lot. And the cost, to me, it's not, it's like a two-point, if this new bridge costs $2 million and the state bridge costs $500,000, to me, it's like a two-point, that, those numbers, it's like a $2.5 million issue because we're going to give up a free bridge and we're going to have the taxpayers pay $2 million bucks for another bridge. So it's like, to me, it's like a $2.5 million issue, which based on the fact that we just went through a strenuous, arduous budget season. And unless, unless it's a fatal flaw that someone's going to come up with on this little, on the state proposal, which maybe there is because there's a lot of residents here, some may not be a fatal flaw, there just might be some other reasons, like maybe not getting a canoe through there, but that's, that's an issue, but that's not a fatal flaw, I don't think. So my concern is if we wait, that, what are we going to gain by waiting other than we need to address what the local residents, the people in the lake concerns are? And we should be able to do that quickly, I would hope, or not. If we can't do it quickly, then I think we need to pull back. If we can do it quickly through the, Greg and, then I think we should, we should do that quickly and say, what's the timeframe of that? So we don't push this bridge out for another, this culvert out, whatever we're going to call it, another year. Because to me, then we get into, something could really happen bad. And now we're going to be stuck with, we can't pull it in because everybody put us in the queue. So I think that in some period of time before we lose the queue, whenever that may be.
Well, that's what I asked.
That timeframe, but how long, when do we have to give the answer that says, we agree that, we agree that all the concerns, the fatal flaw concerns are taken care of? And therefore, as a FinCom member, if the fatal flaws are not fatal flaws, they're concerns that they get addressed and we're comfortable, then I can't, I personally can't spend $2.5 million or more for something that's going to work, the state says is going to work, versus it's not going to potentially let canoe. The water flow's an issue, they need to address to say that's not an issue. If there's silt issues, they need to say that's not really an issue. Those kind of issues worry me. The other ones, and, oh, by the way, we don't want weeds over there. So that flow's going to happen potentially for the weeds. If they say that's going to happen, they're going to take out the cost. Then I, from a finance committee member, would say, and it's my own opinion, since the rest of the finance committee, that I would prefer to go with something that's known, already there, and move forward and not try to build something that's going to be whatever.
Alison, let me ask, let me ask, I want to ask Greg a question. Greg, right now, you're at 25% design. So there's still a lot of things that you have to do. So if we had to go to a 60-inch pipe, that's definitely potential as you go through the design process?
Right, that's really not that big a deal. It becomes a fitment issue more than anything else. And, you know, we look at that, and we, you know, we get it to fit, we bump it up.
So my question to you is, to get from 25 to 100, how much time do you need as a design engineer that's going to come up with the specs so that Kathy can go out to bid in March? How much time do you need? I know Kathy said.
We'll have that done by the fall for us. You know, unimpeded. And, you know, we move forward like that, the design, you know, once we start that design, the ball gets rolling and then we move on that.
Excuse me, this is Kathy. Just so you know, that this project has been on hold since Tom notified me that the abutters and the people had communication or had some issues with this as of 5/31. There has been no progress made on this.
That's why I asked Greg, that's why I asked Greg the question, how long will it take?
Right, and so I am saying that I am going to call, I need to know by Tuesday, September 17th? Yay, or, I need to know yes. And we can still get you on the, into the March and get you hopefully into the next construction season. One thing I want to bring up is, if you have monthly inspections, chances are pretty good your bridge is not going to remain open for a year. And the bridge being closed does not move it up on the queue.
Hey, Mark, let me ask a quick question on, let's assume that, for whatever reason, the town decides that we're going to spend $2 million. Well, we're going to have to go out for, we're going to have to get debt for that, which means it's got to go to.
We're going to have debt exclusion.
A lot, debt exclusion, which means it's going to take, that would have to go when?
Okay, so we would, if we were to do this moving forward, we would schedule it for next, we wouldn't do anything until next spring. I wouldn't call a special election on a debt exclusion.
Right, so when would we vote on that, next spring?
Next spring.
So what happens if the town says, I don't want to spend $2 million, so we don't have $2 million?
Then we're going to be a year behind, year and a half, we're going to have to get back on the state's, the state's list.
Okay.
The year may be too long to get back on the list.
It's too long.
Yeah, so, but I question, you know, we just went for an override.
No, I know.
I question whether or not the town would support a debt exclusion for $2.5 million. I'm concerned about that.
Okay, that's why I asked the question.
David?
I share Bud's.
The microphone's over here.
So I share Bud's concerns. Anytime we have an opportunity to simplify our infrastructure or our long-term costs, I think we need to look at it seriously. Mast dot has stepped up here to provide a solution that costs us very little. And so we should.
Costs us nothing.
Nothing, we don't even say nothing. We just had an override that failed. The select board, the FinCom, said multiple times, we need to look to the state for more opportunities for funding. That's exactly what Public Works did. They went to the state and found full funding. So I think that needs to be seriously considered. And third, if we choose to self-fund, I think this request needs to be balanced against all our other capital requests go through capital planning and compared to all the. To be on the level playing field. Thank you.
That's a great point.
I think it's worth pointing out too, just briefly, that not only will Mass DOT fund the design and installation, but then the maintenance.
No, Kathy sent me it, she misspoke. We would be responsible for the maintenance.
Okay.
I meant to, I meant to bring that up, so I'm glad you mentioned that. I saw your email, Kathy.
I've been interrupting so much, I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, I got your email.
You made a mistake.
Not a problem.
But we will, we will be continuing to do the inspections and we will still be giving you information that you're going to have to want to consider dredging and give you options and opportunities about how to do that.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I appreciate the concerns of the residents, but I just feel like we don't have the luxury of time or the luxury of having excess funds to do this. And again, I think, you know, the state coming through and, you know, I think, you know, it sounds to me like Tom has been, you know, Band-Aid-ing this for a while. And if we push this out any further than we need to, then we're going to be dealing with, you know, we have the water cut off due to P F O S issues and we're bottling water. I personally just feel like we were in a position where we may for, I just think, like, you know, we mentioned safety vehicles, you know, losing access to that side could potentially cause a lot of issues. And one month could be a good month, the next month the inspection could be bad. And then we're in a really bad, we're in a really bad situation. So I'm just looking at it from a, from a public safety, budgeting, finance. If we had the luxury to say we could fit this within our normal operation and we could have the best of both worlds and everyone could be happy. But it sounds like to me that, you know, Mast dot and, you know, the engineers done their due diligence, that this situation's not going to be the top solution for everybody, but it's going to be better than the situation we're in right now. And again, to me, I think the advantage of getting this resolved quickly makes me feel a little bit better. And again, I get it, like, you know, we just, we're not in a position to turn down free money right now. I just feel like it's difficult. We resolve a problem for the long term. I understand it's not ideal, I get that. I'm not minimizing any of the concerns of the residents. But I do feel like also that it would be tough to get by, you know, we couldn't get the override done that impacted a much larger population of the town versus this is going to be a very small segment of the town that would be impacted. So I would find it very unlikely that the majority of the town would.
If I can make a suggestion, we've been going at this for an hour and a half now. Peter and Becky, obviously, aren't here. I don't know if you noticed, there's only three select board members here. But what I would urge us to do is have Becky and Peter watch this meeting tonight so they can hear all the information. And then put this on the schedule, either the July 20, well, probably not July 29th, we've got a lot on that agenda, sometime in August for the board to discuss this again. August 20, because Alison, you're going to be remote on the 29th. The August tw- because Allison, you're going to be remote on the twenty-ninth.
Correct.
The August twelfth to the August, whatever the other meeting is, twenty-sixth, whatever that date is, that we could make a decision. Because I, you know, Kathy pretty much gave us a drop-dead date if we want to be on the march. We're going to have that September. So I would suggest that we table this for now. Let Peter and Becky get an opportunity to look at it. Let you guys mullet over, think about it. I'm sure you'll get a lot more feedback from the residents. Um, there's a lot of them here and I'm sure there's going to be a lot more comment coming in. And then we could probably make an informed decision, um, in, in about a month's time. And that'll keep us on the Mast Dot timeline. That's my suggestion.
I have an indication of one small question or comment.
Just one final comment. The off-system bridge amount of money from Massachusetts, and I don't know if it was for one fiscal year, it'll be repeated in the following, but it was thirty-six and a half million dollars. I'm not asking for Groton to pay for this. I, I agree with the finance committee. Um, but if we can, if we have some time and we can explore, uh, the bipartisan infrastructure bill and take advantage of it, that could also be a freebie. I might be whistling in the breeze, but, uh, Mark's not looking at me.
I'm listening. I'm looking at the calendar, trying to figure out the dates. I'm sorry.
So, no, and, and Tom, I know you're Band-Aiding the bridge, but if we can kind of explore that, I've already got a call into Lori Trahan's office. They were helpful today, I think, talking with our state reps about the, uh.
Just to give you an idea, Al, just hold.
Yeah.
We have been working with the federal government, trying to get money to pay for PFAS solution, the water main, which affects a lot of people in both Groton, Dunstable, and Pepper. We put in a request for four million dollars to help offset the sixteen million dollar cost. We made it through the first step, but they cut it back. And I didn't have a chance to tell the board, so this is my update to you.
Oh, good.
They cut it back from four million to one million. And that is for a three-town solution to provide clean water to a thousand residents. No disrespect to the people that live on Island Road. You're, you're very important. But to think that we're going to get a two-million-dollar grant from the federal government for twelve to fifteen homes when they cut me back from four million to one million, I don't think it's very likely, and please, I'm not trying to disrespect the residents at all. I'm just trying to be realistic on what the expectation should be.
I think it would also not be a timely decision.
Allison, I know you're trying to cut this off right now, but I'd like to make a suggestion. People are throwing out two million, four million, whatever the hell the number is, without knowing what the real number is. Nobody's done an analysis to see what Val's cost, his proposal would cost. So I suggest two things, three things. That the D O T provide detailed analysis of the water flow that they claim that they did between a culvert and an eight-foot wide, three-foot deep water flow underneath the two abutments that are there. Number one. Number two, to test the two abutments, to see what kind of condition they're in. And can they be fixed more, more like what the dam was? The dam was done twenty-five years ago, but it was twenty years old at the time. And it's been there and it's perfect right now, absolutely perfect. And we repaired it with, 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 uh, all kinds of things that Val designed. And then the last thing is, let's get a cost. Let's get a cost for the planks versus the culvert.
I, I think that that alternative at this point has been pretty, pretty firmly shut down by Mast D O T. I don't think those are things we can ask them to do in terms of.
Why not?
Because it's going to push our schedule way beyond what's viable and it's going to give them expenses that they're not willing or able to bear.
So their engineering firm couldn't do an analysis of what Val's proposal is versus the.
Well, they've already told us they will not reuse the abutments. So that alternative is off the table. I'm going to go over here because she's been very, very patiently waiting.
Good evening, I'm Allison Bedard. I'm here as a resident. I live at eighty-seven Crosswinds in Groton. I also need to disclose that I do work for Mast Dot. I am not in any way, shape, or form involved with this project. I am just a bridge engineer. I am a licensed structural engineer. I mean, I took my exam in bridges. I have been a bridge engineer for over a decade. Um, and so I've inspected a lot of bridges, I've designed a lot of bridges, I've literated, and now I fix a lot of bridges. That's my job. Um, so I have two comments, and Greg, I think one of them, you can answer, but to the off-system bridge money, the federal definition of a bridge is twenty feet. Anything less than twenty feet will not get federal bridge money ever. So I can just answer that right off the bat. Greg, as far as you go, um, in the Mast Dot Bridge Manual, um, there's a specific clause about structural plate pipes not being used at waterways because of the significant corrosion we've seen and the reduced life. I don't think a seventy-five-year life is an accurate representation of what we will see with this. Our next town over in Westford just had a bridge replacement because they had a corrugated metal pipe fail way earlier than it should have because of corrosion. Um, so have you worked with the manufacturers, et cetera? Is there coatings? Are you, how are you going to get to that seventy-five years?
Yes, um, good, well, good point, Allison. You, you know, probably better than most of us in the room what, what happens with it. There's, uh, the, the, the structural metal plate industry, I guess, took a hit with their reputation because of the failures. And we're seeing this a lot, a ton right now in the past two years with these culverts, these corrugated metal pipe culverts all failing the same way. They erode at the, the waterline, they basically corrode and they perforate and they sort of collapse upon themselves. All of them were put in around the seventies or so, they've all failed, like, it's all over the state. It's kind of comical when you think about it, unfortunately. Uh, the industry itself has changed the way they, not only with the alloys that they use, but the coatings that they use, the, this is the pipes they use to do that because it was essentially in their best interest to do so because they weren't selling these pipes. So now the new pipes that they have, they have, um, you know, the aluminum, of course, is better corrosion resistance, but they're all, they're all coated, they're all asphalt coated now. They're thicker, so they have that, you know, essentially sacrificial thickness to get up to that, that lifespan. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to sell them because, because of, you know, like you said, there's nobody that would accept them, you know, the way they were.
Yeah, because I know that we, like, on Interstate and stuff, it explicitly says that they cannot be used. So, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Allison, for the clarification on that, um, off-system bridge thing.
All right, so we will wrap it up there for tonight. Um, thank you all. Feel free to reach out to us and we will take this up again on the twelfth.
Probably, yeah. I'll work with you, Allison, to schedule it.
Very good. And thank you Kathy and Greg very much for coming. Very much appreciated.
Thank you for hooking us. Um, please let us know. We are, we are available at the next meeting. We have one more meeting that we can be at. I can come at any time, unfortunately. Par does not have the budget for anything more than about two more hours of their time. So if you would please invite us and let us know, we would be happy to be there. You can email us with any questions at any time. That's what I'm here for. Please email me, like I said, um, it's been put on hold so Par cannot really respond or charge any money to this unless they get specific, you know, two-hour meeting here, two-hour meeting there from me. So if you just please email me and let me know, like I said, both Greg and I can be at another meeting. Greg can be, I can be at any meetings, any time, any day, midnight on Sunday, whatever, whenever you need. I can be there.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, guys. If I could just ask the other conversations to move into the hallway so we can finish up? That would be appreciated.
See you, Brad.
One sec, hold on, hold on. You always do me a favor. Yes, you may. Okay, Allison, anything else you'd like to update?
I don't think so. All right, thank you very much. So I don't think we have anything else on our agenda.
Nope.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.